Can see Jim. And I see Allison's windows. Okay, so we got three. That's all we need tonight.
And Amanda should be in here too. I thought I saw her pop in. Yeah, she's in here.
She's in there, okay.
Okay.
Alright.
My job is done, right?
Until I call you.
Until you call me, okay.
Okay, and we're all set to go whenever you are, Jim.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our November third work board work session. Where you have a number of excellent items on our agenda this afternoon. So I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. Welcome to the November third board work session. So we have three items today. Sunnyside Showcase and Principal Pam Brentner will be presenting that. And then we're going to go into our secondary principals' report. And we'll go with middle school first and then high school. And we'll round out with our continuing professional development with professional learning communities and Assistant Superintendent Roberta Kramer. So we'll go ahead and start it. Pam's ready.
Sure. Alright, let me get my.
There she is.
Okay, can you see a slideshow?
Not yet.
Well, let me just help if I'd screen share it. Okay.
Yes, I can see it.
You can see it says Sunnyside Super- or Sunnyside Student Council. Okay. So tonight, we're just gonna share a little bit about our student council. It's been a, we've had to do things a little differently than in the past. And so this year, we have a fourth and fifth grade student council. And even with all the craziness of COVID, they've been able to be active. And so our student council advisor is Abby Stulp. She's our fifth grade teacher. Their mission is to promote a sense of community within the school while serving the community needs. And then the success criteria that they talk about to become one of the representatives is to be respectful, kind, be able to communicate with students what's happening in a positive way and be inclusive of all individuals and in their thoughts and actions. Our fourth grade representatives, we have Camilla, Rumaisa, Chase, Cadence, and Emma. Our fifth grade representatives are Jason, Grant, Riley, Braden, Hudson, Mohammed, and Kayler. You might recognize one of those kids in there. And then some activities that our student council have started this year is they did PBIS Kahoot creations. So when we are talking with our students every year, we look at expectations to make sure we set a consistent environment for all students. So how we walk in the hallway, how we act in the bathroom, in the lunchroom, all of those areas. And so students made videos to support each area. And then they also created Kahoots based on the grade levels. So they got to be part of the creation. And then what we, the, well, the Mrs. Van Damarc and I go around to the classrooms and present those. In the past, we were able to get some of the student council members, but because of COVID, we've had to limit that. And so it's just great because the kids get to see their, their work in action. Then you're gonna get to see a student shout out video that the kids created. As a staff, we do the shout out, shout out cards across the district. And I know Mr. Hecker does similar shout out cards for students at Cameo. And we've been talking about that and really connecting on kindness and having inclusive practices. And so we wanted to wrap our school in a big hug of kindness. And so what we did is created, the kids created a shout out card that will be for different grade levels. So there'll be pictures for students to circle at the K through two and then three through five, they'll be able to write it out much like we do as adults. And then they're also working on creating a Veterans Day virtual assembly. So all the grade levels are participating in that from songs to poems. And then they're videoing it, sending it to student council. They're compiling all that information and then we'll send that out to families and classes to, to watch as well. The office staff participated. We got to do the, we did the flag salute yesterday outside and videoed it. So it's kind of fun to be part of everything. They just started a food drive and then a Band-Aid drive. So the food drive will go to the local pantry. And the Band-Aid drive is a drive, we have students within our district and within our school that have cancer. And so when they go to the children's hospital, instead of getting the old boring tan Band-Aid, they can get a Band-Aid with Spider-Man or Mickey Mouse or whatever it may be. And so our goal is to collect fun Band-Aids to then give to the children's hospital. And then they also do spirit days. And so they've created a lot of different spirit days this year. We have cozy snugly pajama day. This week, we have your favorite sports team or school spirit. And I was in a fourth grade classroom this morning and they really talked about what that means. And just even if you have to wear jeans, that's blue, that's part of our school spirit. So just trying to make a connection. And I think it's really important in this time right now, especially with COVID, just being able to connect. And you know, we don't get to see each other a lot all together, but it's good because we can share with on a video or we can do Zooms with each other across the school. And so that's been a positive thing that I think has gotten kids involved and reconnected. And it's still not a normal year, but it's way more normal than it has been in the past. And a lot of this is I think attributed to our staff and to our student council. They've put a lot of effort into that. I want to share with you a video that they created. It's about three minutes. Hopefully that's okay. I hope you, can you see a student shout out? Okay, hopefully it doesn't lag. Whoops.
This is Sunnyside Superstars. It's student council here. Sharing an awesome new thing we're doing this year. Shout out cards. We think that you will like them because we are spreading kindness all year long and recognize how awesome these individual here is. They'll be shout out cards in your classroom. Ask your teacher for the location.
The color part is based on the classroom and the group in, in a grade level. For example, Miss Stone has yellow fifth grade part and Ms. Walker has blue fifth. Blue fifth grade part. Each card will have a green label on the back.
Watch for your peers being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. When you notice someone doing one of the, one of these sunny side trades, write down a shout out card. Looks like star cards. You will be collecting the bins on Thursday to take to our student council headquarters. A student council representative will come to your room and grab them between eight fifteen and eight thirty each Thursday.
Yeah, F D R I, F D R I returns at eight thirty to look on the lookout for some, some awesome superstars.
During our student council time on Thursday, we will sort out your cards to give, to give to the correct classroom.
Your teacher will find some tags to leave these shadows. Then student council will hang up these shadows to remember school.
Our goal is to have enough shadows by the end of the year to connect all of the classrooms together.
Thanks for being awesome, Sunnyside Superstars!
This is what the shout out cards look like. One class in your grade level will be yellow. Another will be blue. If there's a third class in your grade level, they're gonna be a lighter blue. And here's what the back looks like. So all you have to do is write the name of whoever was being a great superstar. Circle what they were doing, either being kind, being responsible, being respectful, or being safe. And finally, sign it from your friend. And this is where your name go.
Okay, friends, will you please find a partner or a group of three for our math game? Go.
Hello, then would you like to be my partner?
Sure.
Hey guys, um, I can't find the partner and I don't know what to do.
You can join us. After all, the teacher said two and three.
Thank you. That was really nice of them. I should write in the shout out part. Grant and Braden were being kind by inviting me. Your friend Riley.
Alright. So that was one of the examples that we have for our grades K through two that they created. And then there's another one for three through five. And so those if you can come to Sunnyside or we'll post them, you'll see our shout out cards across the building. And so that's just one of the events that they've been working on. But they're very excited. I talked to them today about it. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't think, I don't think we have any questions from what I can see, but I can't see the whole panel, so.
Okay, well, if you do, you can always email me too. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Alright, next up, we have Lincoln Middle School. I believe Tammy and Samantha are going to present the SIP plan.
Alright, I'm gonna share my screen here. And Cameron, he's at an AWSP meeting today, but he went through and did some highlighting right before he left. So a lot of our goals, one of the things we did is our goals are very similar to what they were. And even though, I mean, I'm aware that because of COVID, we may not be able to attain the actual goal. But the process towards the goal is what we really care about. And that is what's highlighted here. Is that all students will experience at least two, this is for English, you'll see English Language Arts. All students will experience at least two interim performance tasks assessments this year, and teacher will use collaboration time to discuss student results. So this is something that we are really trying to make happen that we haven't as, as concerted effort in other years. And one of the, they're gonna use collaboration time and assessment analysis days to do some data digging and the whole idea of that part of it is so that teachers are, are collaborating on what, what it, what it looks like to reach standard and who's met standard and who's close to standard. And what do we do about kids who are close to standard? So that's kind of, there are a bunch of things in there. Some of them are part of like what we do. There's the connection to CSS writing and reading which, and some things with oh gosh, what are they called when they're the goals that are, oh, why am I? You know, the standards that are essential standards. Gosh, I don't know why that escaped me. Anyway. So some of these things are kind of part of the way we do business, but the interim assessment's a little bit new. And for math, I have, again, this is the same goal we had a couple of years ago, but what I want to really focus on is we have a really young math team this year. We have hired, uh, let's see, what, three people, three, three math teachers in the last two years. And so one of the things that we've been doing that I'm really excited about is that we started meeting before school started as a math department, and I met with them twice before school started. And then we've met during the LID Day sessions as a math team. You'll see that on the LID Day offerings. And that's because what we are, I said, differentiating mathematics instruction using high leverage strategies of productive routines and rich tasks. Both of these are a little bit harder to teach than, than just to open up the book to page forty-five. They require more support. There, they have some really good returns on them. So we've been working with our math department on these. And it was really great because in the last week, I've, I've observed two different, actually I've, yeah. Two for, two that I did formal observations, brand new teachers, both of them using one of the productive routines really successfully. So I was very excited about that. So that, you'll see us meeting and we are working on supporting new teachers for that. So then some of the other things that are on here are things we've, we're working on before, like learning targets, modifying instructional materials to meet the targets, taught working about inclusion, the, the CSS math standards as it interfaces with science. So we've got some things that we've worked on before, but the focus on productive routines is new. So on social emotional, we have started a pilot this year of Character Strong. And we, we're, did one today, lesson five. And we, what we're doing is kids are we're, we're running what we call an assembly schedule. And so then they have an extra period and we're meeting with third period, with their third period homeroom class and doing the lesson there. And we've gotten a lot of really good feedback about how that feels to kids and to teachers. But we were, we're interested in the data. We really do see this as a pilot. We looked at a couple of other programs before we looked at this one. And so we're, we definitely see this as an exploration, but feel good about the beginnings. We also are gonna be, we, we're, you know, working on our book study on equity that the whole district's engaged in. So that's kind of a highlight there. The highlight for special education achievement. We are trying to connect our special education teachers as part of our content area teams. That's a little piece. And I will say that all of the, the session that Mimi, Mimi and I are working together on the math and all of the special education teachers were, are at our morning, three hour morning math session on the LID Day. And so I was really excited to see that and for them getting some access to some of these products. So that's something this year that we're particularly focusing on. And then Cameron added some things down here. Our S R position will focus on reading and writing. These are the two pieces are the toughest for remote setting. They're going to focus on reading and writing specifically in the content area. Our C E E data is gonna drive our focus. Our social emotional learning as well as discussions regarding race, gender, and discrimination were both, they both popped up on our C E E data. And so we're excited to, to kind of engage with that. Yeah, it was, social emotional learning was determined to be an area of need by staff, students, and, and parents. So that was a pretty strong. We want to increase students' feelings of belongingness and connectedness, help students develop skills, need to make, and maintain healthy relationships. We are reviewing, we are reviewing currently, I am meeting with a task force and a teacher is too, that Natalie Dobbins is working. So we can look at a seven twelve. How we want to address social emotional. And while that's going on, also, we're gonna have a team at Lincoln that's working on some things. Oh, this, but this is reflecting on what we did this summer. So we created our team, we had training. And we've got the Wednesdays at LMS for advisory. So anyway, that's kind of, uh, I'm looking at down here to our second goal, understanding awareness of issues related to race, discrimination, and gender. We are working on the book study. We've created a GSA that got started last year. And this year, we are getting our Students of Color Association. The person that's supposed to start it is out right now and will be back soon. So anyway, we'll get that going. So we are moving those clubs in that direction. So anyway, I don't know if anyone has questions. I know that was quick. Cameron said be quick, so.
So Tammy, I just, I have a question. So the C E E data, I know that you had a pre-assessment in post, but I'm not, not sure if you've had a chance to do a pre-assessment or what your.
Well, our pre-assessment, yeah, our pre-assessment is supposed to be Sabers. But we're running into trouble, we have a problem with Sabers that somebody at the district told me to just hang tight.
Yeah, we're working on it. I was just curious if Sabers was the assessment.
That was it, yeah. And so it's not gonna be totally accurate because we will have started, but
yeah, you know, it'll give us some information, which would be good. Any other questions from the board regarding the school improvement plan for Lincoln Middle School? Alright, I see, see two out of four. So I don't hear anyone yet. So.
Thank you, Tammy.
You bet. Thank you for your support. I know Character Strong, we appreciate the support for that particularly, so we can pilot. I am going to be with a group of teachers at my house. We're going to do, do a little conference. So stream, stream a conference. So I'm gonna exit, but I appreciate everybody's work.
Thank you, Tammy. Alright, next up, we have Pullman High School. Alright, see if I can clear that screen there. Ever have a view of that? Hopefully.
Yes.
Wonderful.
We got it, Justin.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Debbie, Samantha, and I are here to share our SIP goals with you. And as in the past, we continue to have our number one goal at the high school. We want all of our students to graduate. That is our goal. There are some sub-goals that we work on to help us get there, but that is our, our number one push. You know, these past eighteen months have set us all back. We've had to work to be very proactive at the task that's in front of us, which, which is very difficult as far as helping our students get back to some normalcy in, in school and in their lives and, and functioning together. And all of this has, has been a pretty big stir, but we are working hard. Our staff and, and, and trying to, to, to help balance everything in, in, in our, in our students' lives, but to help them move forward. As, as we help them work towards graduation. So we really, we've got four, four pieces of this. Of course, one is parent and family engagement. We'll talk about that a little bit. We'll also touch on school safety and climate. We'll discuss student achievement a little bit as well. And then finally, we'll talk about our communication and staff development. This is coming off of our C C E data goal. So our goal is to get our students to graduate. We have four pieces that we think are really important to help our students get there. And of course, the start in that is, is our, is, is to work in partnership with our parents and families to help our students get to that point. Because as much as we reached that last year and the communication that we had, it is different coming back and everyone's kind of reset a little bit. And so we're, we're rebuilding and, and trying to make new connections with families. And so our first goal here is in regards to our freshmen and sophomores. A lot of folks in the building feel like we have two, two classes of freshmen. Because we just, those sophomores really weren't here last year very much. And when they got back, it was awkward and, and, and we're kind of starting fresh with a couple of grades of, of, of students. And so we really want to do what we can to help keep them on track for graduation. We know that's always really important when our freshmen come in. But this year, really, it's our freshmen and sophomores that really need this push as well. So as you can see here, during this, during this school year, the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we want to improve our contact frequency to improve on track graduation rates for our classes of twenty-four and twenty-five. Big way that we're gonna do that is we're gonna use our student intervention team. We've, we worked that team over the past couple of years now. We have it really down to a really, really good process that helps us interact well with our families. And so when we have students that are struggling, that are failing classes, that process really helps us get in contact with, with families and, and keep track with them and allows us to be proactive and not reacting it. Once the semester is done and the students fail the class, but, but early on, we're able to jump in and put some interventions in place. Some of those strategies that we'll use, obviously, is communication. We're gonna continue to try to build those connections with families. Email, phone calls, letters, home, home visits, all those things. And that we think will help us, a- again, again, build those connections with, with our families and, and help us keep our students from, from getting behind, but, but allow us to be proactive, keep them on the right path moving forward. And our next goal is school safety and climate. I'll turn that over.
Yep, I got it.
Yep, to Samantha.
Alright, so the school and safety climate goal, as Justin said, we're going for one hundred percent graduation. So making the school climate safe and supportive to our students is one of those big components that's going to do that. And you can see on your screen that we're going to look at decreasing the inclusion, sorry, exclusion from class due to behavior from two point three percent down to one percent. And looking at the end of the year, discipline data to analyze if that goal was met. Implementing that, we would do timely, consistent processes for behavior intervention. Focusing on that family contact and collaboration between the supports that need to be there for those students and collaboration and communication with teachers to families as well. And then restorative justice practices with our students. So when they are back with us, it's in an appropriate fashion and they feel welcomed to be back with us. A school safety piece is in there as well. And that's gonna consist of staff, staff supervision before and after school throughout the campus so that we have eyes to watch the various choices that our students make. And then continue to emphasize, emphasize and practice the drills that will be there to support in a safe, in a safety event. So that is the school safety and climate section. And I think I'm passing it to Debbie.
Yep, but before we pass it to Debbie, I just want to jump in and say, we have had some, some behaviors that we've had to, to look to curb a little bit this year. We've had several families in that we've worked with. And as you say, there, that, that increased that communication to support our students. You know, we've had some instances where we've had to send some students home. And Debbie and Samantha have done such a good job with this that, that we've had parents that have actually given hugs to, I know it's COVID, but they've, they've reached out and given a hug to, to our administrators and thanks for what we're doing to be helpful to, to, to help get behaviors to the right place for our students. And this is even parents of some students that have had to go home for a short amount of time. So we are building those connections. We, we are help, helping to get things in a good spot for our students. So these strategies are already working this year. We're gonna continue to build on those as we move forward. Okay, Debbie, thank you. Thanks, Samantha.
So the next section is student achievement. And so once, once we have a safe place and we have those connections, and that's gonna help us increase our student achievement and our learning. And that's why we're here. So this goal's very similar to one we've had in the past. And we know that with COVID and having hybrid school and out, that we, we, our learning wasn't necessarily at the same level last year as it has been in years past. So looking at our core areas, English, math, social studies, science, and using the data from the nineteen-twenty school year when we were here in person before we left in March, we had about eight, eight point six percent of our kids were, were failing a class, one or more classes. And, and we really focused on that a lot last year. But now that we're back in person, we're trying to shrink that down to it start with five percent or fewer. Obviously, we want to get up to a hundred percent of kids not failing classes. That's our goal of having everybody graduate. So stepping it down. So hopefully this year, we have less than five percent of students receiving an F in a core class. And, and a lot of that goes back to that early intervention that we've talked about in the other pieces. So rather than us looking at who's failing at the end of a term or at the end of the semester, really getting into that monthly, having those meetings with teachers through our student intervention team. If, if they have somebody that's struggling, getting all those teachers together to help support that student and figure out what's causing that struggle. So we can, like Justin said before, so that we can be more proactive about addressing those needs instead of reactive and saying, oh, there's, we got this, these kids haven't, haven't passed this class. What are we gonna do now? But how do we, how do we catch that early so that they can? What are we going to do now? But how do we catch that early so that they can be successful? We'll also use our attendance data because we know that if they're not here, they're not, it's hard for them to learn. And that's still a struggle this year with, I mean, we're still living in the middle of COVID. So we still have people that are needing to be out in quarantine and people that are out in pieces. And so we've, Tammy shared what they were doing with their ESSR extra funds a little bit. We have a teacher that's, or a parent that's helping in classrooms support those things and then also connecting with those students that might be out and making sure that they have those connections with their classes while they're out and just checking in with them. And we're doing that as a whole, as a whole team, to make sure that if you're out quarantining, you're not going to get behind, hopefully. So that's the pieces of the student achievement goal.
Then our last piece is the communication staff development. And this really comes from our CCE data that we went through. And when we looked at what our feedback was from staff through last year, it's really saying that they want to, we as a staff want to improve our knowledge and our practice around equity and diversity. And so that's the push that we're making with this goal. This is going to help our students overall as well. And so when we look at that data, we're gonna, we're doing practices through professional development that's helping to strengthen our instructional skills and give us a little bit more of a broad range of our, some in-class strategies that we can use to meet the needs of our diverse learners. You know, we're looking at, obviously, at the data, we're looking at from our professional development and our CCE survey data. We're looking at F-list, we focus on early intervention, as we mentioned in some other goals as well. We don't just want to wait till the end of the semester. We want to be proactive in everything that we're doing. Also, listening to our student ambassadors, as we work through this, when we're discussing diversity and equity amongst our students, it's great to hear from our student ambassadors to see what other things we can be doing to help right now. So that's been wonderful. And what we've done to make this happen is we're doing a full staff professional development book study. And then, of course, the professional development that we're doing with a lot of teacher-led development during staff meetings and focused collaboration time, et cetera. So those are our four kind of main goals under that umbrella of helping to get all of our students to graduate. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Justin, while they're thinking about any questions they might have, could you maybe give the board just a brief update? I know that your group has been exploring maybe the social-emotional curriculum at the high school level. And I know your group's been looking at some curriculum, but have not yet landed on anything at this point. But that's continuing work. But I think that's also good for the board to know that that is a piece that you, your team is working on as well.
Yes, we are working on that as well. We are watching closely. We've met, I know that Debbie has met, and Debbie can jump in with this too, has met and worked with the same team that Tammy was discussing with Natalie Dobbins as far as moving forward with that. So we're watching closely how Character Strong is going at the middle school to see how and what we might want to implement moving forward.
And we're looking at what other high schools do. I think one of the big picture things that we're looking at is, pardon me, sorry, instruction, instruction piece of it. But as we get up here to the, how do we help them apply it in real life? Because as they transition out junior and senior year, they're not having somebody sitting next to them reminding them social skills that they need to practice. So how do we help them really have that solidified so that they can apply it as they leave us? And it's a practice and it becomes, but how they can help themselves navigate situations in life. So I think we're looking at other high schools too and seeing what they're doing in the area to see if there's things that work through them as well or that have worked for them. Sorry, I'm rambling.
Thank you for sharing that.
I did have a question for Samantha. School safety and climate, I'm not familiar with the phrase replacement behaviors. Could you brief us on that briefly?
I will. And then Justin and Debbie can hop in if I exclude something in my explanation. So a replacement behavior, I'll use an example. We are dealing with quite frequently up here. Students are leaving the classroom to go to the bathrooms as a break from the classroom. And they're asking other students, fellow students, to come out with them as a support. So a replacement behavior for that would be us advising those students. When you are feeling that you need to touch base with someone, we need you to come to the counseling center, come to the front office. If you still need that period or action, let's get that arranged. But it needs to be not in the bathroom on the floor. I want you to be making that decision and coming down to where adults can be there to truly offer that support if you are in a place where you feel unsafe and not emotionally prepared to be learning. So it's giving them an alternate approach to something that is causing distress.
Allison has a question too.
Yeah, I guess if, I'd be curious to hear you just reflect generally on, I know we're not post-COVID, but how things are different now in general compared to like two years ago? What are some just broad brushstrokes on the high school environment?
Yeah, that's a good question. We talk about that often with our staff. And I think that it is different. I think everyone expected it to be different. But I think it's even more so. It's even a step further down that road than I think people were thinking. I think we all prepared early on in the year to make sure that we were focused on social-emotional, not to just come in and start the first week of school and just jump right into our curriculum and just go. We knew that we had to build in some of this time and make sure we're checking on our students and building relationships and doing those things. But I think our staff has been surprised by how much more we've needed to do of that as opposed to just jumping into curriculum. And you know, we have staff members here that have students here at the high school and at the middle school. And I can say those folks would, I can fairly say that they have good supports at home for those students. And some of those students are still struggling. And so that makes us think really hard about our students who maybe don't have as many supports, how they're trying to handle everything and how much more support we need to try to provide them here at school. And I think Samantha's example was fantastic because students are looking for ways to be comforted. And last year, when they were on their screens, you know, they would be able to connect with their peer somewhere. But trying to bring them back in and connect with the adults has been a challenge as well because we're not as well-known as in the past and the trust isn't there. So we're having to rebuild a lot of those things that we haven't had in the past. And so that's a big piece, that social-emotional piece has been a part that has been a little bit, we knew it was there, but that's been a little bit more than I think we all were expecting. But we don't know what to expect because we haven't been through a pandemic before, so that makes it hard too.
And then just to follow, thank you, that was a great answer. And just to follow up, based on your goal of having everyone graduate, what would have been the percent at risk two years ago versus the percent at risk this year?
That is a very good question. And I can give you a kind of a rough ballpark probably, but that goes into, and why I'm struggling a little bit is because we're allowed, we have different avenues to help students graduate now that we didn't have two years ago. So that makes it kind of a tough answer because we are, as you know, we're allowed to waive a couple of credits and help students get through. And so that makes a difficult answer. So I don't have an exact percentage for you. But we're thankful that the state has allowed that and that we're able to make some accommodations for students because the challenges have been so great. And so we have been able to do that for some students. And that has helped, and that actually has helped keep the graduation rate pretty much on par with where it's been. We're still in the mid-90 range. It would have dropped a little bit lower if we weren't able to waive a couple of credits last year for a couple of students. And so I believe this year, that will be in place as well. But we're hoping that since we're here in school, we'll be able to bump those numbers up even higher with a little bit of help from the state and those credits, looking at those credits as well.
Thank you, Justin.
Yep.
Any other questions for Justin, Debbie, or Samantha?
I just wanted to say thank you, Samantha.
And thank you, Justin and Debbie as well.
And Samantha.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for the update. Justin, we'll see you a little bit later. So.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. I know that several of them have things to do, so appreciate you being here tonight and presenting. And with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item. And I'm going to turn that over to Roberta.
Okay. I am going to talk to you about our PLC, kind of where we're at. I had thought we would read an article tonight, but looking at the time, I'm not sure that we'll have time to do that. And before I keep going, principals, goodbye. Your time is valuable. Adios. I always, you too, Justin.
He comes back later.
I always know it's difficult. They don't quite know when to exit. So. So Courtney, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
It says on the bottom.
Okay, I was just making sure. Okay, so you can see the screen that says PLC Learning. So I'm going to go through a presentation that we shared with our staff. And then at the end, I'm going to show you a video clip of what a true professional learning community looks like and sounds like. So the why. So just to remind you, and you won't be tired of me saying this over the next two and a half years, but our focus is to really improve that tier-one instruction, that first best instruction, classroom teacher to student, always what the goal is, to improve the professional practices of all adults and to ensure more students learn grade-level standards and above every classroom, every school, every day. I would add every day to that. And the work, and just to reference someone that knows it very well, is Dr. Anthony Mohammed, the work of a team in a professional learning community is equity in action. It surfaces challenges kiddos might be having and helps to mitigate those. So as a reminder, it's that we ensure equity by implementing a guaranteed viable curriculum. You might hear us talk about essential standards or priority standards. That's what that guaranteed viable curriculum is. It's guaranteed for each student regardless of where they might go to elementary school or regardless of which class English Language Arts class they're in at middle school or high school. We are going to guarantee them X. They could get more, but we will make sure we are going to get kids to where they need to be. It's creating that a timely and balanced assessment system that allows for equity in that kids are being assessed in similar ways. We are taking those results then and being very strategic with how we approach their learning from that. Removing barriers and planning by planning and providing additional time, additional time support and extensions for all students. We know that that's critical. Just met with the principal this morning where we are going to create some additional time. We see that we need it. Our data speaks to it. So how are we going to try to do something before school starts every morning by doing some front-loading of some staff so that we can get to some of those needs? Or how are we going to approach it? But we know that we've got to create that time for some students. Addressing the standards-based reporting and grading practices. We have some staff members that have been involved in some of this work, but not to the extent that is really appropriate in a true professional learning community. And in a way, if you dress a standards-based reporting and grading practices, you get to those kids who might need to redo, might need to retry, might need to get it in a different way. It allows us to be able to do that. And then continuing to build that inclusive and healthy district and school culture, we've been working on that for several years. And we know that that supports that equity process. I have had these four questions memorized for 20 years, maybe. And it's went back to Rick DeForre wrote a book. He was a principal and then the superintendent of Students in High School in Illinois. And he just says it so well in that, you know, what is it that we expect students to learn? That's that essential standards, priority standards. How will we know if they learn it? The only way we'll know that is if we have that common assessment. How do we respond when they experience difficulty in the learning? And how do we respond when students do learn that extension? And so when we look at our professional learning communities project, question one, what do we do, what do we expect, what do we expect students to learn? That's the focus of this school year. How will we know if they learn it? That assessment piece, that's the focus the next school year. And then three and four are the focus of year three. So we're really creating this system in our school district that that creates structures for teams to go deeper into knowing what they expect kids in knowing how they know if they've learned it and then knowing how to respond if they're struggling or if they need extension. So we were going to spend time on this article, but I'm just worried we don't have enough time. Bob, I was kind of looking for you to give me a sign, but I don't think we have enough time. But I sent it, or I had Courtney send it to you today. It's pretty rich. And I know that there's a board member that has been a part of this. And so Allison, maybe you can give him a Cliff Notes version. I know, I knew you'd be surprised by that.
Well, I wish I would have had an opportunity to review the article, but I will say it is a short and powerful article. And I would say the thesis of it is that they did a meta-analysis of all these different factors that contribute to student learning in school districts. And it turned out that this kind of professional learning communities approach improves a factor of, I think it was like 0.53. Like if you were going to put your investment somewhere, I mean, am I, I don't know if that number is right, Roberta, but it was like, of all the things you could do, it was kind of like a top-five strategy.
It's the number one, it's 1.57.
Oh, 1.57, yeah. It was a huge effect associated with this idea of collective efficacy, that it's not necessarily one effective teacher. It's an effective team, not only a grade level or subject team, but a system where the support for those teams is provided by a district and a culture that actually comes from the board ultimately. So that's why it's really important to get board members. You know, you might not need to know every detail about how this works, but I think this article is really important in that it frames the whole approach and kind of contextualizes for you. So it would, you know, it's, I personally find reading an article in a group setting a little bit challenging. I think it is best done on your own, but thankfully, it is relatively short and it is a very powerful article. So I'm sorry, if I had known I was going to be called on, I would have prepared.
I can imagine how much more prepared you would have been because like that was really great. So that much of the work around collective efficacy and determining effect size is led by John Hattie, who has written numerous books on visible learning. And it's knowing which elements impact student learning the most. And so the, they've looked at homework, they've looked at the efficacy, self-efficacy of a teacher. But the number one thing that moves student learning the most is that collective efficacy. So what, it's that team, it's that school, it's that system. that moves student learning the most is that collective efficacy. So what, it's that team, it's that school, it's that system that supports the learning of each student. And it's just, it is a great article. I would agree. Bob and I kind of were going back and forth on whether or not we were going to read the article to kind of so, but we will talk about it at our next, because I think we're regularly scheduled conversations about our PLCs. So we'll talk about it at the next one. So that's your homework and you've got a little bit of notice to do that. I'll try to have Courtney remind you. But it's like of all the things that we could do, this is the number one thing that can change student outcomes. And thank you again, Allison. I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but you just did a great job.
For a pop quiz, you did excellent on that. So but yeah, I encourage the board to read over that article. It's very short, but it's very powerful. And you'll be hearing about it to get it at an upcoming board meeting. So we'll give you plenty of time to read.
And just so you know, this PowerPoint that I've been going through is one that our staff, our principals have used with the staff. They've used this article, the power of collective efficacy with their staff. Some of them have done it in like small groups. So like at the middle school math department, ELA, different departments read it. And then from there, they moved on to their next piece of the work. So that's how it's being used. We're getting it out there so that people have that understanding of, so why this methodology? I mean, we know what that we want to improve high quality instruction, right? We want high quality instruction for all of our kids, but this is a way to help us get there. Oops, we're not doing that. Okay, so then the next steps that our staff has been working on has been creating our norms and accountability protocols. Because a huge piece of professional learning communities is that is establishing norms. If we're going to, for really focusing on this teamwork, how do we work as a team? And then the accountability protocol is that piece of if things aren't working well in our team, what are we going to do about it? And it, and we know that we all crave accountability. We like to know what, you know, is in store for us. Should we not follow the rules? We know sometimes it will get a ticket if we're speeding. So, but it just, it helps a team to work better together. So we're going to take a couple, look, a look at a couple of things related to this. So hopefully this is going to work. There's some research quotes that I'm going to have you take a look at, and I'll give you plenty of time to read them about why we should create norms. Okay. I'll increase the font if that's helpful. Why should we create norms? And it's just different researchers, but I'll let you take a look at that for a minute. Scoot it down just a little. So I would be interested in what your takeaways are from those quotes about norms. Why might we be spending time on this? I'm an expert at wait time.
Well, I mean, it's, a lot of this is just obvious. I mean, it's like, of course, if we're all in a group and no one knows how to act, how are we going to do anything, you know, I mean, in the base sense? But, you know, I mean, you know, this is like the mastery based learning argument, you know, trying to make everything consistent, trying to make it more uniform, you know, I see this as all part and parcel of just trying to work better as an institution versus individuals, you know? So no, I mean, that's my two cents. It's like it all kind of, for me, makes sense in the fact that we're, you know, everyone's kind of doing their own thing in some respects, in some ways, their own pedagogies and their own teachings. And I've seen this overall effort for the last several years to try to, you know, move the boat in one direction, so to speak, or the multiple little boats, you know, like the flotilla. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of my thoughts is this is more of that and just honestly is great stuff. So, yeah, good ideas.
Anyone else?
Well, I think in order to work, it has to be built upon trust. So, and about the young math team. If you I come into this together. And so the more diversity you have and the more difference you have in ages of teachers, you really have to spend a lot of time the trust factor, because that's where you start running into pre-existing beliefs and biases. So I think having some common ground, I mean, I, that's, that's the way I look at this is just finding how to reach that common ground and then everybody on board, like Nathan said, I sometimes it's it's hard to get everybody moving in the same direction. So.
It's like the understatement of the decade, Jim.
I mean, we, we just spend all of our day, we spend all of our day at work trying to do this, trying to get everybody to onboard and get moving together and supporting those that are not quite there and those that are way ahead of the team. But we don't want them pulling all the weight. So.
Yeah.
Behind, you know, like that's.
Common ground.
And so today I had an opportunity to talk to a teacher who, well, it was Catherine Colville, who she's our music team leader. And, and she said, you know, I know teams have been working on their their norms and stuff, but you know, we've been together for a long time. And she said, we feel really good about where our norms are. And I was like, I just felt, it made me feel really good. She's like, I know why other teams need to do that. We feel really good about where they are and they are, they really are a very high functioning team. And every year they do a book study. Sometimes it's on the social emotional needs of music learners, right? I mean, they are spot on and they, they, they really do function as, as a really good team. And she, you know, and a lot of it, she said she attributes to the norms. We expect things of one another. We hold one another accountable. So I just thought that was a great example.
And one thing on the flip side of that, Roberta, we misattribute people's intentions and their motivations when we don't all have the same norms and goals in mind, if you know what I mean. And so like, it's hard to understand where people are coming from and why they did stuff if you don't all operate under the same norms and common practices and goals, you know? And so, yeah, I totally get what you're saying. And from what, you know, Jim was talking about too, like this is what I do all day at work is like, try to make people, you know, enter the same thing or like use the same thing. And it's, it's all very important, not in of itself with the thing. It's like, you know, it's like language, right? Like we all have to speak the same language and to do that, we all have to agree on what words mean, you know? And so, I mean, I know, I think this is all very important and it's just awesome work. And it's that step by step stuff, you know, because this is not a thing that just happens. It's.
Yeah. And I feel some teams kind of said, oh gosh, we've already, you know, we created norms, but have you had new team members? That's one of the things that they've said to us repeatedly is if there have been new team members, you need to revisit your norms. Because they might, they have to prove, everyone's got to be there and a part of that. So I'm excited about those pieces that we're working on. So, and when we're really thinking about it, it's this whole idea of commitments that we make to one another in advance of the work. And it's because sometimes the work is really hard. When the work is hard, we don't always bring our best self. You know, like there's, like, when I think back to, well, we didn't know how hard it was going to be on that, you know, March 15th or whatever that was back in the day. But as we progressed, I mean, we had to have at least some point of a norm. But it's really around, how will we achieve those expectations that we lay out? How will we review? How will we ensure that students are meeting our goals for them? How will we, you know, I mean, how will we use the assessment data? All, how will we implement our PLCs as intended? We have to have those norms to do that. I won't show you the worksheet that we utilize for that. Whoops. So then a piece that we, that we have not done before was we introduced this idea of utilizing accountability protocols. And this is that piece of, so we have the norm, for example, be on time, be prepared. What does it look like? So what does that look like in a team, in your team? And then what is the protocol when the norm has, is not followed or is violated? Put a dollar in for every minute you are late. And teams will use money to buy coffee or treats of their choice or whatever. And so we do this with elementary principals. We, that's been one of them. Bob was about 10 minutes late. I'm just joking. It probably wasn't 10.
At least 10.
Okay. But, and like, we're all like, whoa, we gotta figure out time because, you know, we want to, not only do I not want to pay the money, but that's what our, that's what we've decided as a team is important to us, is to be on time. Being on time is one of ours and the other one is to be prepared. And it's difficult because what's the protocol when the norm is not followed or is violated in being prepared? And it's, you know, that like, they'll say, oh, Roberta, you can go have that conversation with them. Well, you know what? I don't want to be like, you know, how about colleagues? Talk to them and say, hey, I noticed you weren't prepared. Was there something going on? You know, I mean, we've got to lead with a positive intent, but it's, it's that follow up. Is there going to be follow up? Because is somebody just, because then no one will ever come prepared. So when I was a principal, one of my big rules was they never came to a staff meeting with work to do. And because we did work at the staff meetings, we did professional development every time. And all it took was a couple of times of me going over, I know exactly who the teacher was and said, I'm going to have to have this for you. I'll just hang on to it during this, during the staff meeting and I'll get it back to you right at the end of the staff meeting. And I, that was just what I had to do. I had to tell them that this is what I need because this is our really important learning time. Then they, after I did that a couple of times, of course, it never happened again. So it worked. But what's the, what's the response going to be when we're not able to uphold our norm? So I, I think that everyone has really appreciated this part, but this is the part that I think it's been kind of hard to do because they're still working on this. So then these are some other resources that we have provided for folks that just give them more information. In addition to these, I don't know if you had an opportunity, but we have posted a FAQ on our website about professional learning, team, PLCs, professional learning communities. And so that's also I think very helpful. It goes through much of what I shared at the beginning about the why and the kind of what our focus is every year and things. And Courtney dressed it up a lot. And so it looks really great. And it's a good communication document for us to continue to use and to add on to over time. So the next part is a video from White River. Now we're going to hope that I can make all this happen. I've never tried to do this before. So I'm going to stop screen sharing. There we go. I stopped sharing for just a second while I do this. Bob can probably do something else while I get this ready.
Want any juggle? So again, I think we mentioned the work that we're putting into the norms. And that's something that we've had many conversations about. We've had norms before, but I think what, what we did not have necessarily in place with many teams has been the accountability piece. And so not only the norms are important, but the accountability piece is equally as important as the norms. So again, those will be wrapping up on November 17. And so teams will be providing us with those. So as we go out and observe and work with teams, we'll know what those norms are. So we make sure that we're following the norms of those particular teams when we join those teams. So again, nice to have some deadlines in place and expectations in place as we move forward.
Another change that we have made is that we've done team leaders for elementary differently. So every school has a team leader at each grade level because there's a lot of responsibility in those teams being effective at each building. And so we, we changed that. So that's been kind of fun. Principals have started to meet with those groups at each school. So it, and what it does is that it helps us to leverage leadership across the system and much deeper than, than where we were before. If we just had one team leader for each grade for the whole district, now we have one of those for each grade at each building. So very exciting about that change. And that really came about from our initial work with this. Allison?
Could I just add something in here while you're talking about principals? Just from reading that book, it seems like principals are really the key to the way this whole system with all the grade level teams, interfaces, you know, at the district level, it kind of puts something else on the shoulders of the principals. And I, I just want everybody to be aware of that, like this is going to be a big lift coordinating all of this. And so it's kind of a matter of, I mean, we haven't discussed this. This, I'm throwing this out as my personal interpretation, based on the information I've seen, is it may come down to prioritizing or shifting certain things because this is going to be a big lift.
And one of the things, though, some of this work, they were the ones who wanted to go here, right? I mean, they knew the power of this and the ability to shift student achievement as a result of it. That was why I couldn't go to the initial meeting about this project. And Jim, Bruce, I said, Jim, you went in on this, let's go. So, you know, they have, and they have stepped into it, but you're exactly right. It shifts, I don't, it shifts the what? To some degree. Yep. And I think in a very powerful way. Yeah. Okay, so I have this video ready. What we're going to watch is about a five minute video of a third grade team at White River School District in White River over in Puget Sound. I don't know. I just made that up. Is that where it is?
Edenclaw area. There you go.
Is that where it is? Over there somewhere. And they have had professional learning communities in place for over 20 years. And their superintendent, you'll hear a bit from her, you'll see just a small face up in the corner. She's going to talk a little bit about what you might see and what evidence you might be able to see in the video. And then we'll watch the video and then Bob and I and Allison, if she would like, and any one of you will cut, we'll break it down afterwards, just to kind of take a look at what did we see in what a true professional learning community looks like. So hopefully this is going to work. I say I gotta have more confidence. I say I gotta have more confidence. This is gonna work. Okay, so I'm gonna share this screen. And we will play this. I just hope this sound.
Uh, this one was from just, oh, before COVID, you know, sometime the year before, you know, when we were still meeting without masks on. But I want you to take a look. This is a third-grade team. They're meeting on a Monday morning and they're somewhere in the middle of their unit. So here's what I want you to look for. So we're talking about ensuring. That e- equity through implementing a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So can you observe them talking about a standard? That's part of that guaranteed curriculum. Can you see that there's a timely and balanced assessment system in place? Is there any assessment happening with this particular team? Are they planning that additional time of support? Are they talking about individual kids? So we're gonna take a look at this clip and then we'll go into your breakout for just about ten minutes to debrief it. Again, looking through this particular lens. So here we go.
What misconceptions did we see in their work? So I think that one of the big misconceptions that it's consistent throughout this unit is that. They're not giving specific examples to support their main ideas. They're giving in general things like. It talked a lot about um interesting animals, but not telling us specifically what interesting animal. I think that they, they almost think that when they have the main idea and they knew it was extreme or interesting animals, then they were just telling us where it said that.
I think when you go to the paragraph, they're able to. Have their main idea, but when they do their details, they have a tough time elaborating and not just listening to the facts like you just mentioned about. One of your kiddos.
Yeah.
It just sounds super choppy, cause they're just listening back versus naturally elaborating on that um fact that they stated. Enough information, yeah.
I think that we just need to do more practice with like small text, figuring out main ideas sentences.
I think even giving them the main idea and having them going back to just supporting it with detail, so it's strategically aligned with that. Main idea that we give them.
Because a lot of the times too, they'll come up with their own main ideas that are not correct. And then they're like, there's nothing and I can't support it. Like, how am I supposed to support it? So uh, I think reiterating the fact that if your main idea cannot be supported from the text or you're having over time, it's probably not accurate. Remember, we really heard this group on reading closely, understanding the question, understanding like, does it match my answer? I was just looking at Max's, cause that question's up, the ostrich run. And I was wondering how they would prove it and he highlighted the sentence and it says it is larger than a human. And they chose the one that was smaller, you know, the opposite, but I was curious how they would prove it. And yeah, they just have to read. So in re- it's, in reading interventions this week, we are having. We're rotating classes, but we're doing a main idea practice and a central message practice, right? Retaching and then with our, our writing as well, we're focusing on the idea. So uh, just reteaching and reviewing the formative, I think first off. Yeah, and then um reading intervention time will be spent reteaching and re-practicing the idea.
When we do that, I think we're hearing how to take good notes, I hope then.
Yeah. That's why I like the student caring with the different class so much, because like, I mean, right away, even McKenna came up to us. Cause we both had taught the plan differently, like not knowing. And then the kids came together and then they were like, so Miss uh, Miss L said to do this. And you said this, what should we do? So like, they're thinking about how they're doing things differently and talking about it. So they must have done that with, you know, transition words and everything too. There are a couple of kids that I'm really concerned about. Um. So you had mentioned Mason, um, my Ryan, um, got zeros. And we're very off um on understanding, so I'm trying to think of what would be most efficient for them. In relearning.
Yeah. Mason is getting the true three-word theory where. They are working on these skills, but I'm wondering if we need to have them work on the exact same close read. And having him then trying to do it by himself.
Yeah.
Because accessing it by himself is not helping him at this point. Even just not answering the questions with theory, but just going through the text and taking notes and discussing and digging deeper into the text. And accessing the questions by himself in class. See if he can be um more successful.
Mm-hmm, and the, the two questions, who or what is it about? Like actually having them write that down and say, hey, who or what is that? Animals. Then what about the animals? And then like, then putting it together into a main idea sentence.
Yeah, and having them repeat that repeatedly.
Yes. Let's change faster skills, go with skills, what are we gonna do about it? So we have one week of intentional teaching before close assessments. Um, we have looking forward, can we open that calendar? Next week, the twentieth, we have no.
Okay, that's where it cuts off. I'll stop the share. And I still have big plans. Uh, there's gonna be a way for me to have all these videos, like, so I can show them on a big screen. So the questions were, you know. Wh- what information do we have from the assessment? What kind of time, what time and kind of supports are they going to need? Um, and it really goes back to uh what do we want them to be able to know and be able to do? So. Bob and Allison, others can chime in. What, what was the essential standard in this work?
Well, again, it was looking at the main idea and then, okay, and they were talking about specifically what they were noticing as um. Maybe a whole group, some of the misinterpretations or lack of evidence, you know, rather than. Giving specifics to the main ideas, they were off, off topic. And so again, going from a big, what they're noticing um across those four. Different third-grade classrooms and then getting very, very focused and specific on. Particular students using a common assessment. And then they talked even deeper about, okay, now what are we gonna do for interventions for those specific students? And I think that's the, the power of that collective efficacy of that third-grade group. Is really they, how they were teaching the specifics in the classroom probably differs. But when you look at the themes of what they were noticing as a whole, what they needed to pay more attention to in their teaching. Looking at uh the common assessment and really identifying those particular students that needed more intervention. And what were some of those uh particular pieces going to look like?
Other thoughts?
So is this not generally how these group sessions go? I mean, like, when I read this, there's nothing in here that seemed like this shouldn't be just, I mean, like, if you'd have asked me cold, you know, how does a. Learning group, you know, look at third-grade assignments, this is, would be what I would describe. So like, what is novel about what we saw versus like what we're. You know, what we're currently doing or what our practice has been in the past?
Great question. And so um, part of it is the amount of time that they, you know, cause there were lots of clips here. Okay, so White River operates, they have collaboration once a week for an hour. Okay, so, so the ti- so they're driven differently by the time. So when you only have it once a month. It, it's a, on ti- the timeliness of it is, is a huge struggle. So when you can meet once a week, you can, you can, what they're doing is going through a unit. Over usually about four weeks. If we look at our um ELA or our math curriculum at the elementary. There is about four to six weeks. And so in that, they have a checkpoint every week that stops them and says. Goes deeply into what that, so for this week, it happened to be main idea, which is probably the theme across. All weeks of this unit, cause it's a big deal at third grade. Uh, and then providing those supporting details. So the difference is, is that they're able to get to the depth of what the content is. And there, and we are not using common assessments. We only have just in our, in our two new adoptions. We have just started to, to use those um that then help to drive that conversation. Um, and we haven't had, um, because if you don't meet frequently enough. There's a lot of conversation that is like, well, that already happened. You know, I already implemented that. I, I can't get that time back. You know, um, and so it's that timeliness that is very different. And the depth that they're able to spend, cause a- and what they're also utilizing is a very uh data-rich. Um, database, lack of better word, uh, that has, so they have all those common assessments. So they knew exactly where all their kids were. We don't have anything that sophisticated yet. We certainly have opportunity to through um collaborative literacy and bridges. We just haven't put, been able to put all that together yet. So it's that depth, it's the depth that they're able to go that we're not able to do right now.
Well, thank you, Roberta. That makes, that makes great sense. Thank you.
Great question.
Other questions or comments of things that you watched or observed or, or are thinking about?
Honestly, this looks like the way to go. I mean, this, cause I mean, I've had so many conflicts with rating. Say, for instance, in the past with students. Um, and, and this is like one way to alleviate a lot of those is to have a common standard and then, you know. Have someone to talk to about it. I mean, I, yeah, I love all this. I think it's great. It's awesome.
Yeah, this is a, this is a, a big initiative. This is a multi-year initiative and um, that's why it's so important that I believe that. As the board, you're supporting this work and it's really important for you to know how we're progressing with this. Yeah, multi-year initiative, really important. And uh, so you'll be hearing a lot about PLCs throughout the year, because this is part of your professional development. So congratulations.
And it's been um, having Allison on the leadership team is really helpful because from what I understand. Uh, before both, both before Bob and I here, there, there was a little bit of a. A dip into the water around professional learning communities. I think some folks attended some. Uh, at the time, there was some Whitman County All Schools Professional Development and Janelle Keating um was one of the. Uh, persons that, that came. But it, I, I don't think that the system ever developed around it. And that's the really great part about this, is that we're able to create these systems and it's a, it's truly shared leadership in those leadership team meetings. And Allison and Bob can both speak to this. It's not Roberta or Bob leading the conversation. Those are practitioners that are there. We have teachers there and we have principals there and they're the ones that are really talking about this. Um, because they can see the power in it. Um, and in, you know, cause really our goal is to get more kids meeting standard. Or meeting and exceeding standard. That's what our goal is. Who wouldn't? Who can't embrace that? Other questions or comments? We've been wa- wanting to share this video with you. I just finally figured out how to get to it. Uh, but we'll show it again and we can show this again. We can um share a lot of other things with you as we're going through the process. We uh next, no, not next Monday, a week from Monday, the fifteenth. Our coach uh comes from Iowa to work with the, the leadership team. His, his time, the fir- uh, that first visit will be to uh go out and spend time in schools. And get to know our schools and our, our school district. And uh then meet with the leadership team, meet with principals, uh but to have that opportunity just to get to know what's going on. And we've already come up, like, some things have come up and we're like, oh, that's gonna be a great thing to ask the coach. Um, and that's a part, we get five days in-person coaching and that, some other time uh with him coaching us as well. And, and he's been a, a principal and now is a superintendent who has led um this uh system work. Um, in school districts, so. I think it'll be, I think it'll be really fun to work with him.
Great. Thank you, Roberta. Appreciate it so much. All right. Any other questions? Comments regarding any of our board session study items tonight?
All right. Uh, I ju- I just had, uh, as I was watching that video, I. Seen something like that before, so we must have had something like this in the past. Basically, the, the leadership, are, are we, are we trying to create that leadership? Style within our school district? Is that, is that the objective? Because there was obviously a leader in this discussion.
Yeah, so that's that team leader piece that I talked about at the, like, at the elementary and then.
Right, because, but, but she was able to. Follow the conversation almost. So it, like, was mentioned earlier, it came down to a specific, when she said the words. Really concerned about. It was almost like, okay, that's the time to focus. Because when she said that, you could, you could kind of feel the room change, the conversation change. And she asked the question. Efficient way of implementing this. So she. Drew their attention, then she asked that question, and then she invited input. But there wa- there was a certain freedom amongst the other three. That then they could provide their input, so. I mean, it's, it's just, um, it's really good teaching. But really good leadership too, but it's leadership in smaller groups. I don't know if that would work and I don't know how big a groups we're planning on having in the future.
Our groups are uh, well, at elementaries, they're as small as two. If we only have two at one grade level and they're uh secondary, I, I imagine they're six. Or seven maybe at English of the, so, so very reasonably, it's well-suited for this work.
Right, because six or eight, eight would probably be getting a little large, but six would be ideal. I mean, that's. The, the timing, you could see the timing. Almost like prescribed here. I am really con- I am really concerned about this. Okay, uh, focus times. And then um, yeah, I think it's just knowing it's, it's all about timing. And uh, being respectful of the other three members.
Yeah, one other time when we watched it, Jim, we watched just specifically for what that team leader did.
There was one member of this team that wasn't interacting very well. He was very quiet. Of the four. It was one that I hardly heard from. It was only a short segment too.
Yeah, it goes much longer, so.
Yeah, anyway. It'll be good.
Well, thank you. Uh, it looks like we're approaching the end of our board work session, so um. We do have a very, very short special work session or special board meeting, excuse me. So Courtney, can you remind our uh audience the next step?
Yeah, sorry, next step will be that we're gonna exit out of this work session and then log into the second Zoom meeting link that I sent you earlier today. Um, this is just for recording purposes, so we can have these two meetings separate. So if you did not receive the email with the second Zoom link, let me know and then I can send it to you via email really quick. It's also in the meeting invite for this, uh, for the special meeting. So I'm gonna end this meeting now and reopen it with the special meeting link.
We ended, we have the motion second. We ended, we have the motion second and then we'll end, Tim will end. And then I'm gonna try to log on, but I may or may not reappear in the next meeting, depending.
And I'm not going to.
Our quorum disappeared.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second and, okay, we'll end the board work session and then we will see you in a special board meeting.